Hello, this is Joe Pearson, the project planner for this application. This is a presentation for the Ventura Road Electronic Billboard Project filed by Lars Sackstod on behalf of Outfront Foster Interstate LLC. Starting with the summary of the project and background. This is a request to allow for freeway adjacent digital display billboard. On February 2nd, 2023, the commission denied a special use permit and recommended city council deny three related permits which would have allowed for an electronic billboard, which will be described later in this presentation. Based on the denial of these special use permit, the commission could not find the street vacation in accordance with the 2030 general plan. However, in their motion, the planning commission stated that should the city council approve the freeway adjacent digital split billboard ordinance as originally proposed by city staff, which would allow for this billboard, they would be in support of this proposed project. This would include finding it consistent with the 2030 general plan. Also, as the final decision maker for the specific plan amendment and the development agreements as well as the vacation and to ensure the city council had opportunity to review the whole of the project, all related entitlements are being presented to the city council for their consideration. City staff filed a request for review of the planning commission's denial of this special use permit. City staff continues to recommend approval of the project as originally proposed by the applicant based upon the authorization of the ENAs by city council, which identified potential locations of the signs compliance with state laws established by the California Department of Transportation, which is the agency responsible for freeway safety and consistency with applicable policies and regulations, as well as the results of the environmental review, which identifies that all impacts could be mitigated to a level of less than significant. The special use permit would allow for the development of the of an electronic billboard that would include a digital display of advertisements of various businesses, activities, services, or products. The top of the billboard would be approximately eighty feet above ground and the dimensions of the electronic billboard would be fourteen and a half feet in height and forty eight and a half feet in width. The electronic billboard would have a two-sided LED display that would have a dimension or have dimensions of fourteen feet in height and forty eight feet in width. The proposed development agreement will allow for the use of city property for the purpose of a freeway adjacent digital display billboard and outline the required public benefits to be provided by the future development. The proposed specific plan amendment would amend the River Park specific plan to allow for freeway adjacent digital display billboards within the River Park specific plan. And the proposed street vacation would vacate the existing right-of-way at the sign location to the city of Oxnard. The project is located on the north side of US Highway 101, immediately west of Ventura Road in the northern portion of the city of Oxnard. The project site is currently undeveloped right-of-way within the River Park specific plan area. The area surrounding the projects project site consists of a mix of office and commercial land uses. US Highway 101 is located immediately south of the project site across US Highway 101 to the south. Adjacent to Ventura Road is the Wagon Wheel Development, which is currently under construction with residential townhomes, condominiums, and limited commercial development. To the north and west is the Santa Clara River Basin that includes vegetation. Northeast of an approximately six hundred feet from the project site is a senior a gas station and drive-through restaurants. The table shown summarizes the land uses and zoning designations of the project site and adjacent properties. On June 18th, 2019, the city council approved and authorized the mayor to execute a exclusive negotiation agreement with Outfront Foster Interstate LLC for potential digital display billboard sites. Under the terms of the ENA, Outfront Foster was given the exclusive right to negotiate with the city for an initial six-month period and two additional six-month terms if the projects were being diligently pursued by Outfront Foster. The ENA is currently on the Seventh Amendment, which runs through June 6th, 2023. Part two consideration of the subject requests, city council must take action on amendments to the Oxnard City Code to permit freeway adjacent digital display billboards on parcels designated as commercial, industrial, or public facilities, or in general, any non-residentially zoned property within four hundred feet of US Highway 101 right-of-way within the city of Oxnard and approve an amendment to the River Park specific plan to allow for signs in accordance with the Oxnard City Code. Each freeway adjacent digital display billboard shall be separated from every other freeway adjacent digital display billboard by at least two thousand feet with a maximum of four allowed in the city. For some background on the River Park specific plan, the plan was adopted by city council in September of 2002, together with the general plan amendment, zone change, annexation, development agreement, and EIR certification related to the specific plan approval. The original specific plan allowed for phased development of approximately 2,800 dwelling units and two and a half million square feet of commercial development. As of today, seven prior amendments to the River Park specific plan have been approved. The project is located on an approximately 1,000-square-foot enveloped site located on the north side of US Highway 101 and immediately west of Ventura Road in the northern part of the city. The proposed site improvements includes the installation of the electronic sign and traffic barrier. In the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan, this location is identified as the possible location for the Santa Clara River multipurpose path. City staff has reviewed the proposed sign and barrier location and confirmed that there is sufficient space for the future path should it be developed. Should it be developed in the future? As the sign is controlled remotely, no parking is required and in the rare event onsite work is required and a current permit can be attained to allow for the use of the adjacent right-of-way similar to utility companies which with facilities in the right-of-way throughout the city. Shown here are the proposed sign elevations. As shown, the pole would extend approximately forty feet below ground and approximately sixty-five and a half feet above ground. The portion of pole above ground would be painted primarily gray except for the upper ten and a half feet, which would be painted black. The pole design has been kept simple with the gray color to minimize the visual impact of the pole itself. The top of the billboard would be approximately eighty feet in height above the ground and the dimensions of the electronic billboard would be fourteen and a half feet in height and fourteen and forty-eight and a half feet in width. The height of the signs again are intentionally measured from the adjacent freeway grade in order in the ordinance, which has a fifty-five-foot maximum height from the freeway grade to the bottom of the sign face or to or eighty feet to the top of the sign. This form of measurement is used to ensure a consistent maximum height as viewed from the freeway. Due to due to portions of the freeway, which are significantly above or below the adjacent grade, as in this case, this method of measurement will ensure a consistent view of the signs as people travel along the highway and will ensure that all signs are treated and viewed equally. These are renderings of the proposed sign as viewed from the north and south bell lanes of the of Highway 101, as well as from the opposite side of the freeway near the Wagon Wheel Development. Lighting levels on the digital sign will not exceed point three foot candles above ambient light from a distance of 250 feet as measured according to the standards of the Outdoor Advertising Association of America. Brightness shall be adjusted based on ambient lighting, so the sign brightness will be reduced from sunset to sunrise. Illumination shall be directed that such that minimal light bulb will occur on either side or the top or bottom of the sign face. For reference, based on a existing lighting study, based on a study of existing lighting levels along Ventura Road, the average illumination is fifteen-foot candles due to the existing streetlights and other nearby lighting fixtures. Based on the site study, the illumination at the nearest residency zone of property is approximately point one four foot candles as shown, and this is far below the existing lighting levels at the existing streets. The proposed development agreement will will outline the required public benefits to be provided by the future development. As proposed, as proposed, these include a thirty-year term, monetary payments in the amount of thirty percent of the annual net revenue with a minimum guarantee of 150,000 per year, which would result in approximately four and a half million to eight-point-four million over the term of the agreement. The development agreement allows for the city's use of the sign to the extent that commercial advertising on the on the billboard is unsold and unavailable. The development agreement will allow for the use of the sign by Caltrans and the California Highway Patrol for the purposes of amber alerts and other emergency or disaster notifications by local, state, or federal agencies. The development agreement includes a discount for Oxnard Auto Dealers and the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce members of ten percent. The development agreement also include provisions on signage which is inherently false, misleading, or libelous or promotes the sale or use of firearms or tobacco products, whether directly or indirectly promotes adult entertainment, products, conventions, events, websites, contains obscene manner as that term is defined in local California or federal laws. And lastly, the development agreement will allow for the use of the city property through a lease agreement. The River Park specific plan amendment would amend or would add the type seven C freeway adjacent digital display billboard building type, provide development standards for type seven C freeway adjacent digital digital display billboards, adjust landscaping requirements to remove freeway planting requirement where billboards are proposed, and the specific plan will defer to the Oxnard City Code for the specific development standards. The proposed street vacation would vacate the existing right-of-way at the sign location to the city of Oxnard. The proposed site improvements include the installation of an electronic sign and traffic barrier. As previously noted, this location is identified in the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan as a possible location for the Santa Clara River multipurpose path that has reviewed the proposed billboard and barrier locations and has confirmed that there is sufficient space for the future path should it be developed. The city's 2030 general plan land use designation for the subject site is commercial regional. Consistency with the use proposed is commercial and consistency with the 2030 general plan is defined by the relationship between the 2030 general plan policies and the proposed project. Many policies are directly or indirectly applicable to the proposed project. Some of the key policies are shown here. The project has been designed to be consistent with the proposed development standards and applicable mitigation measures. These include separation requirements from residential uses, limitations on illumination levels. Based on the photometric analysis provided, lighting levels at the existing and at the existing residential uses and the current multifamily uses that are currently being processed would be approximately point one foot candles. Because the lighting levels would be less than point five foot candles, the project would not result in a significant lighting impact on existing or future adjacent residential uses. The proposed project sites and River Park are located within a designated urban village, which contains other urban uses compatible with large-scale advertisement. As the sign is located along the freeway, which contains other similar signage, including the collection sign, the auto center sign, and the esplanade sign. The proposed DA allows for the use of the city property and outlines the required public benefits to be provided by the future development. No other improvements are allowed or required by the development agreement and therefore does not conflict with the general plan land use goals or policies. The project's consistent project's consistent review with general plan policies is further detailed in the staff report. The proposed project has been determined to be consistent with the general plan and the property's land use designation. As noted previously, the city is currently processing a ordinance amendment to allow for freeway adjacent digital display billboards. The proposed ordinance amendment includes development standards which will be applicable to all freeway adjacent digital display billboards developed within the city. This this proposed project has been designed to be consistent with the proposed ordinance as further detailed in the staff report. Additionally, the project must comply with the final ordinance as adopted. Therefore, if any changes occur to the proposed development standards, the project would be required to be amended to bring that compliance or the project would have to find another location if this location was no longer feasible. An environmental consultant, under the supervision of line division staff, prepared a prepared the ISM and D, which evaluated potential environmental impacts of the proposed project. The ISM and D was prepared pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. The city prepared a mitigated negative decoration, which was released for public review for a thirty-day period as required under CEQA. The city received five comment letters. Comments and responses were included in the MND. Changes made to the draft MND for the changes were made to the draft MND for the final MND based on the comments provided. The final ISM and D includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which details the process to implement the required mitigation measures. After implementation of the standard conditions and mitigation measures, all potentially significant impacts would be reduced to less than significant levels. Specifically, the MND found that the implementation of the proposed project would result in potentially significant impacts associated with biological resources, cultural resources, and noise on wildlife species. Mitigation measures have been required to reduce each potentially significant impact to less than significant levels. The mitigation measures have been required within the the mitigation measures that have been required within the MND would reduce potential significant impacts. These measures include connecting a pre-construction survey for active bird nests and conducting focused product all nest surveys for the least bells of area and monitoring and collecting if necessary any discovered archaeological and paleontological resources. After implementation of the required mitigation measures, the potential significant impacts would be reduced to less than significant. No remaining significant impacts would occur with respect to aesthetics, although less than significant lighting impacts are expected to occur. The MND includes mitigation measures that are recommended to further reduce lighting or further reduce impacts. These measures measures include allowing for remote shut-off and even a malfunction and conducting illumination verification tests. With the inclusion of the mitigation measures for the areas noted above, the project will not have a significant impact on the environment. During the planning commission's public hearing on June or January 19th, 2023, the commissioner was asked a series of questions as a result of staff's and the applicant team's presentation. One verbal comment was provided during the public comment period on the project. The questions and comments were generally in regards to impacts on views and lighting. Following commission deliberation, a motion of intent to deny the project that they cannot make all the findings required to support the project was made. However, as part of this motion, the commission included a statement that if the city council did not incorporate the recommendations on the zone text amendment or the freeway adjacent digital display billboard ordinance, that they would be in support of the proposed project as it was further from existing residential. The planning commission then continued the hearing to February 2nd, 2023 to ratify the action by approving the resolutions of denial. And specifically, they could not make the findings related to the adopted policies as well as the development standards as due to the recommended changes to the ordinance, the project was no longer in compliance with the freeway adjacent digital display billboards ordinance as proposed. On February 2nd, 2023, six members of the planning mission were present with one commissioner absent. The commissioners who were not present on January 19th, 2023 confirmed that they reviewed the staff materials and watched the video of the planning commission's January 19th meeting. One of the commissioners who was previously present on January 19th was absent on February 2nd. On February 2nd, 2023, the commission voted six to zero with one commissioner absent to adopt a resolution denying the special use permit and recommending denial of the specific plan amendment, street vacation, and development agreement to the city council. While the commissioners did raise concern about the project's visual impacts. Also, as the final decision maker for the specific plan amendment and the development agreement, city staff filed a request for review of the planning commission now the special use permit to ensure that the city council had an opportunity to review the whole of the project. The primary concerns and reasons for denial was related to the inconsistency with the recommended amendments to the freeway adjacent digital display billboards ordinance. The concerns raised regarding visual impacts on the Highway 101 corridor were raised by a few of the commissioners as well as the public speaker. Specifically, comments were made about the impacts on mountain views. While the proposed billboard would be visible, it is consistent with the nature of the US Highway 101 corridor, which is generally characterized by urban high-density development. This includes mid-to-high-rise developments in both the River Park and Wagon Mall projects, which include urban developments up to a hundred feet in height, as well as other commercial developments, including car dealerships, hotels, restaurants, etc. The corridor also includes other similar large-scale signage, such as the existing auto center sign, which is seventy feet tall, the existing collection sign, which is sixty feet tall, and the esplanade sign, which is seventy-five feet tall, and are all constructed essentially at freeway grade. This is similar to the proposed project, which would be approximately sixty-five feet tall as viewed from the freeway. In addition to these signs, there are numerous larger illuminated freeway signs, including electronic ones along the corridor. Therefore, the proposed billboard would be consistent with the overall nature of the corridor itself. A community workshop on the project was held on December 20th, 2021. Public notice signs were posted onsite. Notifications were mailed to the River Park neighborhood. Approximately 2,000 notices were mailed. Eight members of the community attended this meeting and two members and two spoke on the item. The video from the online workshop was also posted on the city's website for members of the public to view separately. The primary concerns identified at the community workshop was related to the general allowance of electronic billboards and lighting impacts. Both aesthetics and lighting impacts were analyzed in the environmental document, and it was determined that the with the implementation of the project mitigation mitigations, the impacts would be less than significant. There was also a request to prepare an additional site rendering showing the sign from the adjacent side of the freeway, which has been which was prepared and included in the staff report and presentation. Following the community workshop, there were other notifications and opportunities for public comment. These included the CEQA notice, which was published in the newspaper and mailed out the January 19th and February 2nd planning commission meetings, which included publication in the newspaper, onsite posting, and a mail notice. For the city council hearing, again, a onsite posting was done. It was published in the newspaper and mailed out to all partners within 300 feet. As identified in the staff report, the city council has the option to move forward with the with one approval of the project, but the adoption of the resolutions and ordinances listed under Resolutions and ordinances listed under option one in the staff report recommendation. Or to provide direction to. To deny the project and direct staff to return at a date certain meeting with the appropriate resolutions of denial. As previously noted, staff continues to recommend approval of the project as already proposed by the applicant. Based upon the city's authorization, approval and extension of the ENAs. Since two thousand and nineteen. Consistency or compliance with state laws established by the California Department of Transportation, which is the agency responsible for regulating freeway safety. Consistency with the general plan zoning and environmental review. And. Specifically noting that the lighting impacts would not have a significant impact on any residentially zoned property.